Good morning, everybody. It's July 14th, 10:00 a.m. I hereby call and meeting the Stewart County Board of Supervisors to order special note to the public. We are originating from the administration building in Nevada how the public access is being provided via Zoom. And if you're looking at the agenda on the website, our instructions for Zoom are at the end of the agenda. So I would ask anyone here to join us in the fledgeable meeting. A fledgeable meeting to the flag of the United States of America and then to the college where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. And we're, again, we're providing a public access via Zoom. We have a meeting in person because of the dis-social distance because of the COVID-19. I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
The move second.
Headends?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Agenda done. Thank you. Next, we have updates on the COVID-19 situation. Do we have any updates from staff today? Hearing none. Do we have any updates from the supervisors?
All are present today.
None? Okay. Next, we'll go to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Does anybody in the public, from the public sector, have anything they would like to say about any of the items on today's agenda?
No one has texted in using my number.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, then we'll close public comment number one, and we'll go to discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with a request for immediate action. Do we have anything staff? And we'll go on to agency reports. Martha Stewart County has submitted a report, and Tricia Kane, it looks like you are on the call.
Yes, I am.
Good. It's an excellent report. Do you have anything that she would like to add or to highlight about your report?
Um, I don't think so, not at this time.
Okay. Does anybody have questions?
I don't, Tricia. This is Lisa. Thank you for your report. I also appreciate the fact that you did include some information regarding kind of the challenges with COVID-19 and how that's impacted your program.
Right. Well, basically, we've been at the mercy of the state Special Olympics calendar since the middle of March, so, which makes us very sad for some of our self advocates and athletes who really rely on the programming that we offer on a nightly basis to get them out in the community and offer those social and recreational services that they normally might not get otherwise. We have resumed doing weekly Facebook chats with everyone. We had hoped and planned to start meeting at parks during the month of July. However, we have since decided that it's not a good idea with the increasing in numbers, plus with the heat also going back up. So we'll see where we are in August. It helps a little that it sounds like the two main day programs offered in Ames through Friendship Art and Mainstream Living are looking at ways in how they are going to open in August also. So even if Special Olympics is not having any of their regularly scheduled competitions, that we will at least be able to offer some type of social and recreational programming. We're also still working hard to get Project Search going for the year at Iowa State.
Thank you, Tricia. Do you have any questions?
I have no question. Thank you.
And thank you for everything that you're continuing to do under very difficult circumstances. We appreciate it. Your report.
Okay, thank you so much.
Next, we have consideration of minutes. We have two sets, July 7 and July 10. We probably, if there aren't any injections, we can do a motion for approval.
I would so move that we approve both 7:20 and 7:10. Oh, I'm sorry.
Olsen?
Aye.
Headends?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Minutes are approved. We have no personnel actions, so then we'll go to consent agenda. Do we need to pull any items off consent? Okay, then I would entertain a motion for approval of consent.
So moved and presented. Second.
Headends?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Consent items are approved. Now we'll go to public hearing items. First we want to have is consideration of plans for Hickory Grove Park Road resurfacing project. Conservation, Mike Cox, I think you're on the, on the call? You're muted.
Yes. Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Very good. Well, thanks for the opportunity to come to you this morning. As you know, for the last nearly several years, we've been working to restore, doing a restoration project at Hickory Grove Park and Lake, and that project is now, we hope, in the final stages. So we're very thankful for that. We knew that we needed to replace some, replace the road surfacing there at the park that has been in need for many, many years. And we did not want to do that prior to completion of the lake basin renovation because of the heavy traffic that would be on the road. That is now complete, and so now we're moving forward with this budgeted item. So today, we're just asking for your approval to move forward, release bids for this, and then we would set a bid opening date of August 4. So Ryan, Weemold is here with me this morning, and he's going to chat just a little bit more about the project.
You bet. Thanks, everybody. This is just going to be a three-inch asphalt overlay on just roughly over a half mile of our interior park road that's already asphalted. So currently, this is the only hard surface that we have over in our interior park. The rest of it is gravel, so we're just asking for that three-inch overlay on our existing road that goes from our main entrance, past our campground, past our boat ramps and our beach, and then goes back to that big loop road in the back of the park. So the current condition is very poor, and it's, especially after all that construction traffic, and it's time to make that a little smoother for park users. So we did coordinate with our engineer's office on this. Tyler Sparks put together our design plan for this and consulted on the project. So we think we're ready to release that and put it out for bid.
Any questions?
No, we discussed this pretty thoroughly during the budgeting process, the CIP process. And so I think it's pretty clear, and the public can find the information pretty, very easily. So I would move that's a public hearing.
I'm sorry. Whoops, I jumped ahead. It's okay. It's a public hearing item, so I'll open the public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? And please unmute yourself if you do have a comment. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion. I so move that we approve placing this plan out for bid, and the bid opening date set for August 4.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Not Olsen?
Aye.
Headends?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Approved. Mike, I'm going to ask you one other thing since you're on the call right now. We had a conservation commission, or conservation board, excuse me, meeting last night, and you had recorded on the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail and how much that we were kind of getting a lot done this summer. You said what part of it, by the time we're done with this project, would be, would be done? And you said it would be from Cambridge to, do you remember the street?
Yeah, so, so on the Heart of Iowa paving project that we're working on, with the completion of the current projects that are under construction, and the previous project that was completed last year, we will have, have it paved from Cambridge, or excuse me, from Slater all the way over to the Skunk River Bridge at Cambridge. We are working on getting one more construction project out. You'll hear from us here a little bit later this summer about getting a bid package released on that one, but that would be, or paving a small section in Slater from R-38 over to the High Trestle Trail. So that's a half a mile.
Yep, just over a half mile.
Half a mile section there. So again, once we get, once we get that project done, we'll have complete continuity from the High Trestle Trail over to the Skunk River Bridge. And I know Darren is working on one section of that that includes a road grade, a trail at, at a road grade on 530th. So I believe he's moving forward on that, too. So we'll have, we're really excited about the progress on, on that, and hearing lots of, lots of good feedback about that trail. That answer your question, Linda?
And I wasn't, it's not on the agenda, I know, but I just didn't, I just wanted Mike to have a chance to talk about that. Okay, that's my error, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Thanks, Ryan. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next, we'll go to discussion and consideration of the Ames Urban Friends Plan, Land Use Framework Map Amendment for the Bishop Farms property. Jerry Moore, are you on? It's Jay ZM. I think that's Jerry. Jerry, we're not hearing you. Are you on?
No, but did you call in? It's one of those other two numbers. Did you call the number? There's a 7246.
Can you unmute that one? Jerry, can you hear us?
This is Jerry, planning a development. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, got you.
Okay. This is an Ames Urban Friends Plan map, Land Use Framework Map Amendment submitted by Brad Stumbo on behalf of Bishop Farms. And they are requesting to divide the 47.84-acre parcel into a 15-acre parcel. And the goal is to adjoin that 15 acres with the 115-acre parcel, which is to the east, which is, consists mostly of the mining operation. The proposed 15 acres consists... Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the 15 acres would consist of the office, the scale house, there's some parking area and circulation area that the trucks use when they load up, sand and gravel. So the, the goal is to match up land uses. The office, the scale house, with the mining operation to the east, and, and also address taxation. The balance of that 47.84-acre parcel is in row crop production. And so currently, the entire parcel's taxed commercially, and with the proposed division, the taxation would change to agriculture classification. The applicant Bishop Farms has no interest in changing their land use from row crop production, nor does Martin Marietta have any interest in adding any additional uses to their mining operation. As far as the adjacent land use, the land to the north and east is part of the mining operation. There's a large 21-acre parcel to the west. There is a single family dwelling on that parcel. It's a split-zoned agricultural and R1 transitional, the south portion. This R1 transitional residential zoning extends from 13th Street in Ames, north along both sides of Stagecoach Road, and then at the intersection with West Riverside, it extends westerly to the creek. And this R1 transitional residential node shows up on zoning maps from 1960. So it's been there for several years. The use, the mining use was established back in 1959 and approved by a different applicant. The office and the scale house, where that operation is, was a part of a conditional use permit that was approved in 1990. The City Council for the City of Ames reviewed the request and approved it May 26. And the City of Gilbert will take this up on the 20th of July. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved it at their meeting on July 1 with a vote of four to zero. At that meeting, there was a call in from someone from the neighborhood who had questions about whether or not the applicant or Martin Marietta had plans to do anything else with their land with this proposed division. And I and Brad Stumbo, who submitted the application, confirmed, based on the information that we received, that there are no plans to, to do anything different. There's a concern about the dust that's generated from the site, and I shared some information that we'd been contacted by a representative from Martin Marietta who communicated to us that there has been some concerns about dust being generated, and they believed that it was coming from trucks that were leaving their property. After they're weighing out their materials, the truck drivers are pulling over on their private drive, and on the shoulders, it's currently dirt surface. And so they submitted a conditional use permit and significant modification to pave those shoulders to address that dust situation. So I communicated that to the property owner. So again, this is a request to change the land use designation from rural transitional residential to general industrial, which would match up with the land use to the east, except for the part of this parcel and proposed parcel that zoned R1 transitional residential district. It's approximately about 160 feet. It makes up about a two-acre area. We did send notices to property owners, and we also published notice on the 9th. And with that, we are, the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of Resolution 21-03, which is the change from the rural transitional area to the general industrial for that proposed 15-acre parcel, except again for the area that zoned R1 transitional residential. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
I have none. Jerry, this is Lisa. I do have a question, and it's in regards to the dust. So your comment was that the, the resident was concerned about trucks that are leaving the mine, where they would come onto Riverside Road and the dust that is on there. That, I just want to make sure that's where you're referring to. Is that correct?
Yes. The, the person that called in lives on Stagecoach Road, south of the, of the access. And I just shared with them that we've been contacted by somebody from Martin Marietta who, you know, wanted to make this site improvement to pave the shoulders of that drive going in, and they're thinking that that's going to help cut down on the dust. And so that application was reviewed because it was an insignificant modification. It was reviewed and approved.
Okay, okay. And I just kind of, because I drive by there almost daily and stuff, and so I'm familiar with the dust level that used to come, come through there. So thank you for that clarification.
For some reason, trucks also seem to, as soon as they've left Martin Marietta, pull off onto the shoulder of East Riverside.
Right.
I've never understood why they do it, but that's not, yeah. That, so the Martin Marietta paving won't help that. That's just what the truck drivers are doing there for some.
I think it's gravel there.
It is.
It's all gravel right in that area.
The shoulder of Riverside.
Yeah. So I don't know if that's adding to the dust level as well, or, I don't know that. I don't, I don't know.
So, and Jerry, just to let you know, I'll be bringing this up tonight, the East Riverside, when the Ames Area Metropolitan Planning Organization needs, because they, it's a wish list, I think, right now about what they'd like the next 25 years to look like, but they are, they are looking at widening. One of the things on the wish list is to widen East Riverside. So just to, to know that this doesn't impact us at all today, but I am going to mention it tonight, that about the neighbors and about some of the concerns.
The other issue that happens, definitely, is that a lot of times trucks are going very slowly, excuse me, and pull out from the traffic. And this morning, I saw one, somebody was making a, a truck was coming from the east, making a right turn in, and a truck was going out of the driveway, made a, pulled out in front of him, almost caused an accident. So it's going to be pretty, pretty different. But that's not, do you know what they're going to pave to their driveway? Did they say, Jerry?
Yeah, I think the drive is paved in, you know, the main entrance there in Martin Marietta, and they were just paving the shoulders because those are like dirt right now.
That's, that's what I meant, was when they were paving the shoulders.
Yeah. Yep. Up to like where the office is.
But you don't have a date or a...
Actually, I, I communicated earlier in the week and was asking for a status, but the only thing I can say is that the, the plans were approved, or the project was approved. I don't know if they've started the actual work yet.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? If not, I'll open the public hearing. And any members of the public want to comment on this, I'll give them a minute. Hearing nobody, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval of the amendment to the Land Use Framework Map.
So moved. I'm assuming you're referring to Resolution 21-03? Is that, I just want to make sure that's what's on the...
Yes.
Yes. I'll second.
Okay. It moved and seconded to approve Resolution 21-03, amending the Ames Urban Friends Plan. Any further discussion? If not, headends?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Approved. Now we'll go on to additional items. And Assistant Director in recent March, we, Resolution 21-06, FY21 Fund Balance Resolution. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Annually, the GASB 54 requirements are that the governing body do a fund but balance resolution for all of the ending fund balances for the year. So what you have in front of you is the ending fund balance resolution. Committed funds are a separate resolution that you've already done for, for the end of the fiscal year. So this is, is all the other budgetary fund. I did also provide you with an ending fund balance breakdown, so that you could see what was unassigned, or what was assigned in and unassigned in the general fund, which is really the only fund that we have any options with. So are there any questions?
No, thank you for the end of the year.
Yeah. Of that, of the unassigned 2.3 million, that's over and above the 25%, we'll be amending about 1.4 of that back into the budget, FY21 budget. According to my preliminary numbers. I don't have final numbers yet because I haven't heard from all the departments that I know are going to need to amend some dollars and to get carried forward.
That's good to know. Thank you on that one. As now we start to look at what do we have as part of flexibility that we sit at the standing or sitting down.
Yeah, 36% ending fund balance. I was going to talk about quarterly, with the quarterly update, but that's, we've budgeted about 30, so it's about 6% higher than we budgeted, which is fairly typical. So that was, that was good to see.
Good news. Any other questions? Not? I would entertain a motion approving Resolution 21-06.
Would so move. Second.
With a discussion? Not? Olsen?
Aye.
Headends?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Thank you very much. Now we'll hear from Carla Webb on the Stewart County Detox Services Funding Policy. Morning, Carla.
Morning, Laura. Good to be here. This is in regards to during the budget work session, we had discussed community services reimbursing non-share entities for substance abuse civil commitment transport services when the transport is designated by the sheriff rather than the sheriff's department providing that transportation. So I looked at the detox services funding policy, and I am proposing name change to the policy as well as amending the policy to incorporate involuntary civil commitment fees for attorney and sheriff transports, and some language was added and removed regarding contracting for services. The original intent was to get this implemented shortly after the budget work session, and I'd worked on the policy changes in that in February, and then COVID hit, and so things have just kind of gotten delayed here. But Ethan has had now a chance to review the policy. We've also updated the contract template. The contract template was specific just to detox services, so now we've broadened that so that it'll mirror the policy before you today. And so once the contract has been signed by the other providers, that will come back to on consent agenda. So before you today is a request to, for the changes before you on the policy. Do you have any questions?
I did not have any. I thought you did a nice job of clarifying here.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to approve what is now going to be called Stewart County Substance Abuse Services Funding Policy.
Correct.
So moved.
Okay. Discussion if not?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Thank you very much. Good work.
Thank you.
Next, we have conservation again. Mike Cox, discussion and consideration of hiring freeze exceptions for conservation technicians.
Good morning. Thank you again. We're bringing this before you for your consideration this morning to fill a position that we have had vacant for, now I believe since May. So pursuant to the hiring freeze, we had an employee leave employment with the county and make a move back to a family area. And, and so we have left that, left that position unfilled, of course, as per our policy. We are experiencing, and Ryan will talk more about this, but this year with, with the situation that we're in, we're experiencing incredible hesitation and use loads in our parks and facilities. And we'd like to now come forward with a request for an exemption from that policy and to now fill that position. So the Conservation Board supports this. They voted unanimously last night to support this request, and so they're making this recommendation to you. And with that, Ryan, I'll tell you a little bit more about it.
Yeah, we've, we've been experiencing some high park use, which has been wonderful. One of the wonderful outcomes of this, this COVID... Uh, one of the wonderful outcomes of this, this COVID epidemic. Um, we are getting a lot more exposure in our parks. Um, people that don't usually trek outside to our parks, um, we're making contacts with new people, discovering new areas. So, um, we don't have a current mechanism for numbers to monitor park use, but we know our park use has increased quite a bit. Um, several examples I could point out is our beach at West Peterson um, is, is much higher use than normal. Um, during the week, we're having a lot of families come out. Um, on the weekends, the beach is just completely packed and the parking lot's full. Um, typically, we only get that kind of, um, use on a big holiday weekend. So, uh, we know more people are venturing out. Uh, the McFarland Park parking lot is often, um, all the way full on a, a evening, a nice evening, um, during the weekday even. So, um, typically, that's not the case. So, uh, trail users on the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail and then the Prairie Rail Trail, we're also experiencing a lot more use on those two areas. So, um, just in general, we're, we're seeing a lot more people out and about in our public areas. So obviously with that comes a little bit of an increased workload um, as far as cleanup and maintenance and addressing safety items on these areas. So, um, this position request, um, we've been down a position this, this summer and we're just asking, um, for this position to be filled so we can catch back up, um, on some of these maintenance items as well as our workload. And then we have some larger projects coming up this summer yet that will be handling in-house that we would, um, like this position to help with.
Are there any questions on that?
Um, I guess my only question would be, is this filling a position? Did I hear you say that somebody left the position, so you're filling a position?
Yeah, this is filling a vacant position. Um, yeah, we did have someone, um, leave employment with the county less, last May. And, uh, it's been vacant since then.
May of 2019, not, because your, the paperwork here says that on staff since May of 2020.
Right, May of 2020, correct.
Okay.
Boris, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I mean, it's clear at Pearson Park, where I was spending some of my time at the beach, is that there's been a real effort there to improve the parking area, appreciate the parking strips, um, uh, and also the extra stand on the beach and that it's being raped, uh, frequently. And, and those are all good things that I want you to know that as I talk to some of the people, the families anyway, that come to Pearson Park, they comment what a nice place it is. And then I tell them, I'm a supervisor and thank you, and I'll pass it on to the staff. So consider it fast on, okay? So I know that that comes at a, at an, an effort, okay, for your, for your staff. So I just wanted to let you know about that, and at least at that particular part. I know that people are appreciating the effort that we're putting in. What we're hearing now from you is that that effort is coming at a kind of a cost to your employees with a lot of burden. Or potential burden.
Thank you, Boris.
And, um, I know you don't have exact numbers on park use. And I appreciate Ryan giving, you know, the anecdotal, talking about what he's seen because you don't have, you know, numbers from last year to this year to compare. So we've got to go on the experience of staff. So I appreciate you sharing that.
Yep, and I do want to make the comment, we have a mechanism in place to track those numbers moving forward. So on our FY 21 budget, we have several, um, trail counters and vehicle counters that will be going up in various parks around the county so we can start tracking that information better.
Okay, that is good. That, that will be, I think, really helpful for grant applications and things like that as well as justification for funding to supervisors. So good, thank you.
You're welcome.
21 will be the baseline here. Okay, I would, uh, if there's no further discussion then, I would entertain a motion for a hiring freeze exception for the conservation technician position.
Blue is white, turn. Okay, so I so move that we approve the hiring freeze, uh, exception, uh, for the conservation technician.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Wilson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye, it's approved. And thank you. And, uh, I know that as Supervisor Olson said, that members of the public appreciate being able to get out to our county parks this summer because there's so many other limitations. So thanks for everything you're doing.
Very good, thank you all.
On then to additional item four, Discussion and Consideration of Using PayPal Instead of Heartland for processing credit card payments of zoning permit and development case applications on Citizen Serve. So Jerry Moore and Stephanie Jones are listed, are you on call?
Yes, good morning, board, this is Jerry, uh, planning and development. Stephanie is also here. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, uh, implementation of Citizen Serve. The county's new zoning and development case application system is nearing complete. Uh, the first part of our implementation will include allowing the general public to submit zoning permit applications. And then once that gets established, then we're going to move on to the second phase, which is to support the, uh, submittal of development case applications. Um, a component of this implementation though is to, to actually determine um, which credit card payment processing company to use. Uh, prior to the board, um, approving the contract to go with Citizen Serve, uh, the information was provided about these affiliated companies. There's a list of 20, uh, companies that provide payment processing to process credit cards. Um, and the information that was provided indicated that, um, if we used one of the 20, there would be no charge. Currently, we use Heartland to process our credit card payments. Um, so to use Heartland, Citizen Serve, uh, will need to charge us $5,000 to, to make that happen. So our position is that, uh, we think the board should support the use of PayPal instead of Heartland. Um, I want to thank Stephanie for taking the lead on the implementation of Citizen Serve and the review of these, uh, credit card payment processing companies. Um, she looked at them, she also reached out to the entities in the state that actually have Citizen Serve and found out some information about the payment process companies that they're using. Uh, we have some information that we provided in the memo. After the analysis, we determined that these three, Authorizing Net, Elvahn, and PayPal were the top three. We also provided the comparison of, of, um, Heartland. Um, and for the most part, the, um, uh, the second one there, Elvahn, uh, had the greatest amount of annual and monthly fees to the county, uh, followed by Authorizing Net. PayPal, um, didn't have any fees, uh, that would be required for the county. However, when you compare on a per transaction basis, their per transaction, uh, charges are more than what Heartland is, is charging. Currently, uh, they, uh, they just had a reduction, but they were charging 2.5% per transaction. And now they're charging 2.25% per transaction. Um, we tried to match it up with, um, different, uh, fees that we receive. Probably the most common fee is a zoning permit application. So a $30 zoning permit application that somebody submits from the general public, comparing that to the cost with Heartland and PayPal. Uh, with PayPal, there would be a 49 cent, uh, increase. Uh, if you look at like a additional use permit application, which is $275, there would be a difference of $2.09. And then also, if you look at like a zoning permit for a single-family dwelling, which is like the second highest category of permits that we typically receive, there would be a difference of about $3.55. Um, we did kind of take a look at the numbers over the last two and a half years. Um, and to make it simple, if you, um, you know, we had about 300 and, um, I think 56, uh, zoning permits, about 115, um, development case applications. And if you, if you simplify that and just look in terms of, uh, using like the $30 fee for zoning permits, 275 for, uh, development cases, you know, comparing the two, it would be a difference of about just under $300. Um, divided that by the two and a half year period, it's about $110 a year. And just to, to make up that difference, uh, would, it would take over 40 years to reach the, the $5,000 threshold. So, we, I also want to thank Stephanie in, uh, the coordination uh, that, that she displayed with working with the Treasurer's Office and trying to communicate the information on other payment process companies. Uh, we did, uh, meet with their staff and, um, I see that Ted's on the line. Um, I think generally, there may be some apprehension, uh, some uneasiness about switching from Heartland to PayPal. Um, and I think part of it is, is it, it will be a change. There will be some additional, uh, steps that will be involved, um, with, with our department's be required to run a report daily. There would be some additional things that the Treasurer's staff would need to do. And I, I think, um, as I said, Ted is on the line and I, and I think he would like to add some additional comments. Um, but again, our position is that, you know, we think the board should support PayPal. There is no, uh, integration fee of $5,000. There's no annual or monthly fees. PayPal accepts, uh, additional credit cards that Heartland does not accept. There's no annual contract. Uh, there would be no charge from Citizen Serve, plus Citizen Serve receives no royalties by us using PayPal. And I think just overall, the benefit of going to Citizen Serve, Citizen Serve is that the general public will have the benefit of uploading their applications, their materials, and paying if they want to pay by credit card. Uh, they can do that from their home or their office. They also have, still have the option of submitting like a credit card, or excuse me, a check if they want to, or paying by cash. Um, so I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, but you answered them, so. Any other supervisors?
No, but the phone.
They look for Ted.
Yeah.
Okay. Ted.
So, uh, I unmuted myself, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so our, our concern here in the Treasurer's Office is we're kind of neutral on, on what direction, uh, Jerry and his office goes and what, what area you guys go. We just wanted to let you know what our concerns were and, um, let you guys make the decision. Um, $5,000 setup fee is an expensive setup fee for this. Obviously, we would like you to consider Heartland to keep, keep it, um, because right now, uh, the Sheriff's Office, the, um, Environmental Health and us and, um, one other office all use Heartland, so we get one report a day. So we reconcile to that one report. PayPal would now be sending us a second report. Uh, that wouldn't necessarily be much different from the Heartland report. It'd just be a second report, a second set of processing that we would have to do every day, which more processing leads to the possibility for more errors. Um, then the other thing is we do get a pretty nominal fee for every, uh, transaction we have with the bank. Um, I think it's about 12 cents. We found out it's 12 cents, so, um, this shouldn't be a ton of fees. I mean, we're only talking about probably $30 a year or less, um, for the switch from, from Heartland to PayPal, but it would be extra. Basically, what would happen is we'd have to have PayPal dump into a separate account rather than our general account. And, um, we do have that account set up, so we wouldn't have to set up a new account. But every time they dumped into that separate account, um, that would be a transaction. And then when we transferred it out into our general fund, that would be a transaction. So it just adds processing and extra stuff, which always, um, always kind of adds a little risk for errors or omissions. The only other comment that we would have is in our office right now, we actually lowered to 2.25, Jerry mentioned that, the processing fee. We still get a lot of complaints about 2.25. Um, because we're a government entity, we have to charge, I kind of remind people, we're charging you the bare minimum. So the bare minimum is the cost of your license plate, the cost of your permit, then plus the processing fee. We don't get to add in a 5% or 10% profit margin and then take it out of our profit margin to pay off the credit card for you. We charge you the bare minimum, but people still don't appreciate that. So I do feel like, um, at 2.9% and 30 cents, uh, they could get a lot of pushback from the public. Now, maybe they don't get that many credit card transactions, so it won't matter. But I will warn that we get a ton of pushback at 2.25%. Those are our only concerns. Like I said, we're, we're neutral on this, uh, topic. I guess our attitude is we just don't want to, we don't want you to feel like, oh, it's just saving the county 5,000. It's a no-brainer. Um, because, um, the added fees could cause a little bit of apprehension with the public and it just does add some processing to ours, our side. We can figure that processing out. Um, just wanted you guys to consider the, the whole situation. Otherwise, um, whatever, whatever you decide and whatever, you know, Jerry's kind of preferences, uh, will make work. Thanks.
Ted, does this add workload to you by having an additional processing?
Uh, a little. Um, basically, right now, we're able to process the Heartland report all at one time because it, it includes everybody and we can match that up to solutions and make it work. Um, by adding in a second report, it just adds us, you know, now we have to do the Heartland report and then we have to do the PayPal report. I don't think they get a ton of customers through, um, planning and zoning, so I don't think it would be a ton of extra processing, but it would add a little time.
What are the credit cards that PayPal accepts that Heartland does not? Jerry, do you know? Stephanie?
Uh, one of them is American, American Express. That they accept, that Heartland does not.
In the report? I was just wondering if there was any advantage to the general public or significant advantage PayPal over Heartland? The disadvantage would be a slightly higher fee, but I was just wondering. So American Express is one that...
So, oh, okay. Okay, so I have several thoughts that go through my head here. Um, one related to a favor of PayPal is a lot of people understand what it is. And second of all, I haven't used my PayPal account in a while. But I remember you used to, you know, people, if you were paying money and you, let's say it's, it's somebody who, um, collects fees because he's a construction person, right? And he gets paid through PayPal. There's cash in that PayPal account that didn't be moved out, uh, to pay for those permits. Whereas these credit, I've used Elvahn with my business in the past, too. It's a straight, uh, credit card in kind of thing. It has no capacity for people to have cash payment, okay? Uh, so those are two things about PayPal pro. The con and that's ringing a bell in the back of my mind, and I'm kind of looking at Barb's side back here as I think about this, is I remember sitting in the room, in this room, over the years, regardless of which side of the diet I was on, you know, and I remember that sometimes when we've got a lot of different vendors programming, programs, that if there's changes and then Barb's staff or the one or both vendors have to go in and make some kind of connection, they'll talk to each other or there's some kind of bridge that needs to be purchased. I don't know if that would be so in this situation, okay? It sounds pretty cut forward and more of a manual thing with the Treasurer's Office. But there is the, the, the... But there is the concern I hear. Okay, so if somebody could address kind of the bridge situation at least.
Well, one thing that I will say, Loris, is when we first saw this, we had concerns that this was going to be the county setting up a PayPal account. And that is not what that is. So, that's good. We didn't want an account tied to any of our bank accounts. You really have to look past PayPal as its history of what it first was. It's basically just a credit card vendor right now, like any other credit card vendor. And it's really CitizenServe, from what I understand, Jerry can correct me. It's Citizen Serve that that will really work through that bridge and make sure that the connection is good, and that's what the five thousand would do. The five thousand would then make Heartland that bridge. And then, as I think Jerry mentioned, if another county in Iowa decided to use this, it's also on Heartland, they would be able to pick Heartland as their vendor without paying any fee. Because Heartland would now be set up with the bridge for going forward for Citizen Serve. But on our side, basically what would happen is PayPal would cut, well, they wouldn't cut us a check, they would basically process the payment, then they would do an ACH to us either one day later or two days later, and send us a report of the amount that they're sending us and why. And Jerry can fill in what happens on their side, but I do kind of want to make that clear. We are not setting up like what you'd historically think of as a PayPal account, or tying our account to a PayPal account in any way. We're just receiving money from PayPal that they've processed for us.
Thank you, Ted, thank you.
Jerry, how many applications a year do you anticipate, or do you usually have?
I'm sorry, Linda, what did you say?
How many applications do you accept in a year's time? Approximately?
Well, I tell you, we just looked at the last two-and-a-half years, and we had about three-hundred-and-fifty-six zoning permit applications and one-hundred-and-fifteen development case applications. So...
Four-hundred-and-seventy-one.
That's over a two-and-a-half-year period.
So, about two-hundred applications a year? Or under two-hundred?
Yeah, around one-hundred-and-fifty zoning permits.
Okay. So, not a large amount, so it's probably going to be a small amount or small number compared to what you're getting to Heartland, as I mentioned, Ted. So... Okay, any other questions? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion regarding the use of PayPal for processing credit card payments. On that, okay. Do you have more questions?
Well, I'm just kind of going back and forth, looking at the, I do see the pros of PayPal, I use it myself on things. I often continue to get emails if you want to get like PayPal credit cards, or if you're just doing general PayPal. You know, it's all public money, so whether you're using Heartland, the public's paying for that system, or it's the public paying the potential that increase in fees. And which are they going to be more concerned about? I kind of look at the long run, that probably savings about five thousand dollars when you're only getting, you know, about two-hundred applications a year. It's a huge, it's a huge savings, so that leads me to say that I would move to approve utilizing PayPal to Heartland for processing credit card payments, the zoning and development case applications.
I would second.
I agree with you about the, what that five thousand would be, because it's not a lot of applications. So, any further discussion? Mark?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
You were talking out loud, does it help you process?
It does, it does.
Sometimes people look at me and wonder.
Thanks, Jerry and Stephanie for the work, and Ted, thank you for your willingness to go with either solution, given the good points you brought up, we appreciate it. And then we'll head on to discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty-one point oh-four, Malaby Residential Parcel Subdivision. Marcus? Are you, is Marcus with you?
Good morning.
Board, can you hear us?
Now I can, yes.
Okay, Emily is going to do most of this presentation for the Malaby subdivision. So, can we make it so she can present the PowerPoint?
She has to request to share the screen, correct, Mark?
Um. It states that it's disabled.
Hold on just a second, Mark's checking on something. Emily, somebody from IQ will be down to help you in just a second.
Okay. Okay, can you guys see that?
Yes, we can.
All right. So, this request is a residential parcel subdivision for Shirley Malaby, she is the property owner. The subject property is at five-oh-five-four-two-one-eightieth Street in Ames, Iowa. It is located in Section eighteen of the Franklin Township, Range twenty-four. The property is zoned A-one agricultural and is within the Mary Greeley Ambulance District. Midland Power Coop and Xenia currently service Lot Two and have been contacted and are able to service proposed Lot One. Additionally, the property is located in the Squaw Creek watershed. The subject property is located outside of the Ames urban fringe and is within two miles of the city of Gilbert and the city of Ames. Both cities waived review. Adhering to the requirements outlined in the code, the subject property is completely within the A-one agricultural zone, and lots created through the division will create two buildable lots for single-family dwellings. There currently exists a single-family dwelling constructed in nineteen ninety-six on Lot Two. Proposed Lot One will create a forty-five-point-thirty-three-acre lot. There currently exists an access point for Lot One on one-eightieth Street. Proposed Lot One also contains a nineteen eighty pole barn used for farm equipment storage, which will be a continued use. Proposed Lot Two is an eighteen-point-eighty-three-acre lot and contains an existing dwelling built in nineteen ninety-six. The existing access is also off of one-eightieth, however, both access points are over three-hundred feet apart. Proposed Lot Two contains a non-conforming legal existing machine shed built in nineteen fifty. The proposed division is also intended for the sale of both lots, however, no current plans are available to develop Lot One at this time. The subject property contains environmentally sensitive features that are classified as a large forested tract with closed canopy and deep interior forested areas along streams and adjacent uplands. A forest reserve tax exemption was filed in twenty seventeen for approximately forty-four-point-eighty-six acres and generally encompasses Lot One. Lot One also contains a drainage easement of thirty feet in width on either side of the meandering of Squaw Creek, which runs through Lot One. Additionally, there is a flood plan covering approximately thirty-eight acres. Lot Two contains a single-family dwelling with a legal non-conforming structure. Surrounding the property are parcels zoned A-one and residential districts. The subject property is located near subdivisions Eagle Ridge, Woods, and McCoy. The planning and development staff recommends alternative ones, the approval of Malaby subdivision as foot forth. And then, if there are any questions, Marcus and I are both on the line to answer those.
Okay, this is Supervisor Olson. So, my question has to do with Mrs. Malaby saying that the land is going to be put up for sale. Is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it for sale already?
There is a buyer already for each separate lot.
Okay, all right. Ted, does anybody know if the buyers are thinking about trying to do any development?
Yes, so I've spoken with the buyer of Lot One. He is currently using that existing farm building for storage of farm equipment. And right now, for any foreseeable future, that's all he's planning on doing, is just using that as it sits. At some point way down the road, there could be some development, but he has no plans right now to develop it.
Okay, thank you. That was kind of my concern, that we had an accurate picture about what was going to happen in the near future with the plan.
Yep, near future and long-term has been discussed.
That's my only question, otherwise it seems pretty straightforward.
Supervisor, Ted, do you have any questions?
No, I guess my only question would be, I would assume then, if they were planning on Lot One to do any development down the road, they would still come before planning and zoning permitting on there. So, you would have some, another mechanism of approval on there. So, as I said, not as you're, I just want to make sure on that. So, okay, so I can answer my own question, or Ted, here?
And part of the reason I ask is because there is also land very close to there, apparently, that being sold at fifty thousand dollars an acre right now, or five, I heard, management company.
They're lowering the price?
Huh? They're lowering the price from twenty thousand, yes, they did, but I just want to make sure. Okay.
Okay, I have no questions. So, I would entertain a motion approving Resolution twenty-one oh-four, Malaby Residential Parcel Subdivision.
I would still move, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Jerry, none? Olson?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. And, thank you, Marcus, thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Go on to departmental reports. We have four reports submitted by our engineer, and Darren, on the... Darren, if you're there, did you have anything that you wanted to add to your report? Darren, if you have anything you want to say, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, good.
Yeah, the only thing I'd want to comment on is, on the second page, under DOT construction issues, they changed some of the Highway thirty phasing last week. You used to be able to go southbound on S fourteen, and now that access is completely shut off southbound. So, there's a number of Nevada residents south of Highway thirty that have no choice but to take gravel now. The DOT is already dust-controlled at once, but we're going to have them shoot that again tomorrow after the rain, and we get to blade it again, but so it'll be a lot of additional traffic on the gravel roads, which started last week, so I just wanted to point that out.
Any questions, Board?
Yes, so Darren, going back up on page one, construction project design, two-hundred-and-twenty-eighth Street. And you note once again that the right-of-way negotiations were put on hold last winter. The Board had kind of discussed this in a previous update that you've given us. So, given that there also might likely, sometime in August, be a drainage district five meeting. And I believe that the landowner that you were in negotiations with is back now, I believe. I think it's time, maybe the Board needs to have that discussion about do we in fact want to enter back into, do we want to start those negotiations again? Obviously, you saw from, once again, this AAMPO document or presentation, that tonight, you know, they're looking, the city has on there also their wish list. I appreciate your email that's my favorite with a wish list. Has a wish list about doing some changes out on East Thirteenth Street in the future. And that feeds right into two-twenty, so I think it's time for the Board to discuss at least if we want to reactivate right-of-way discussions, because that's only one piece of a bigger puzzle, correct, Darren?
Yeah, that's true. So, yeah, we, the Board has the option of bringing that up now, or you could wait till the budget discussion, and we go through our local construction budget this fall. And we'd still have time at that point to still get it let in the winter and resume negotiations, get it let. But, yeah, it'd be, if the Board still wants, consider paving that next summer, it'd probably be best if we start those discussions sooner.
Okay. That is my preference, given how long that this has been looked at, consideration. Nevada now has a city manager again, and while I'm sure that city manager is not ready to jump in on those discussions full-heartedly, we know that the right-of-way is one component of this. You've got, on the other hand, the AAMPO plan, which is a little longer regarding their consideration for East Thirteenth. And then, there's still, sometimes if I'm not in a hurry, I don't go down date, I go over on East Thirteenth and then turn on five-eightieth. And there's a lot of trains there. And in the AAMPO plan, I did check, there's nowhere in there for Ames to build a bridge. So, we've got the East Industrial area where they're out pushing it, COVID's going to end, and things are going to pop, I believe. And we've got, we've got, there will be extreme demand for an alternate route that does not take people over those railroad tracks at five-eightieth. That's my reasoning about we need to start talking.
So, are you suggesting that we direct Darren to be under any some conversations with the landowner?
Well, where we left it last time, I thought, Linda, you were advocating for the three of us to have an actual official on-the-agenda back-and-forth discussion about whether we wanted to, so I thought that was what the conversation we were kind of holding to have, and then based upon what we come out of there is, would be directions to there. But maybe I misunderstood that.
When would you be coming back to us with a discussion of the Plan here, like twenty-one?
The first discussion would be our local budget part, which should come, you know, in November, December timeframe, would be the earliest unless we brought it up sooner. And the other thing to keep in mind is, keep in mind, we did not bond for that project at this point. So, if we did move forward with Thirteenth Street paving, we'd have to bond again.
Correct, yes. I'd like to point out, the landowner winters in Florida. So, by the time that we're having our discussions in October and November about what to do... So by the time that we're having our discussions in October and November about what to do, do we want to even continue to, you know, reactivate right-of-way discussions? Or maybe even pushing a project that you guys are going to end up bonding for two years coming up, okay? There's other timeframes to fit into, into this. That's why I'm really kind of moving it, saying, if we can have initial discussion now, or at least start it to be finalized in November, December, that. We've got a lot of different key players that have to be involved.
What I would particularly appreciate, I think, is some kind of a summary of the right-of-way negotiations and discussions we've had in the past, and some kind of perspective on what right, when you're used to paying for right-of-way. Because I think that's one issue we need to think about as well. So I'm wondering, Darren, if you could just put on an upcoming agenda, the discussion of this issue, and include some kind of summary and history of recent right-of-way negotiations as well as where we are on this one. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, I can do that to the point of not getting into the negotiations of that specific property owner. That's confidential until it's final.
Okay, but we need to close session. Okay, but just our history. Yeah?
Yeah, I can do that.
And in this one, not the negotiations we've had, but what we would need for right-of-way and maybe, you know, some metrics for that would be helpful. And then we can make a decision on direction. That's.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Supervisor?
Yeah, it is. My other suggestion is maybe checking in with Ethan to find out then after you present that in open session, is that maybe when we would go to close session, if appropriate, to then discuss this particular property? Because once again, that would be advantage or disadvantage.
Yeah, so could you check Ethan as well then and have? So we could have him available at that same time, potentially for the whole session?
You talking to me?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, I can do that.
I'm staring at you on the screen and you. Thank you, Darren.
I think the one of his most questions, I thought already said that maybe he's looking at what else they're looking at. I mean, and where does that come into play or not? I mean, I saw probably some additional information as well.
And that's on what, what we've been referring to is kind of the, what they're looking at tonight. And it's kind of a wish list, it's all the projects. And it's not really a prioritized list.
Correct.
And that's going to take some time as well, from my conversation with Darren this morning, to get that down into a four-year plan is going to be still more process.
Which, especially if you look at part of what they want to do at East Thirteenth, is not only do they want to add another lane or two lanes there, I'd have to go back a little bit, but they want to deal with the interchange, and that's a step, okay? So that's a long project, but they could widen on their own up to where they hit the step. Am I correct, Darren, that, that, I mean, as far as that goes? The other issue is that while the Ames City Council has selected its growth areas for, you know, for their Twenty Forty plan, which go west and south, they first included, or also included, is what they've called the Tier One in, that are the ones that touch city limits already for annexation. And they count that northeast of the interstate there. So once again, we're talking about a road that if, if some of this land would be sold for residential development, is what they're looking at, on the east side, the northeast side of East Thirteenth. They've got still, apparently, Denny Elwell wants to build on the southeast side, right? I mean, see, there could be activity that would be activated. I guess I left that out for reasoning about, let's start talking. At least know what we want to do, but won't, don't worry.
Okay, so we'll start with the right-of-way discussion and also schedule closed session and injunction with that, so that we can talk about the current negotiation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions then? Are there? Any other? None? Okay. Darren, any comments?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, we have other reports, and we have the Story County Orderly Plan year reports. Assistant Honor, this is Martin. Good morning again.
Good morning again.
Last week, one day, I updated all of your budget books, your budget history books. So you should have the latest and greatest F Y Twenty year-end information in there. This summarizes how the year ended as far as by department, by fund, for expenses and revenues. The countywide shows, if you look at the, on expenses on the first page, three point eight million dollars in unspent funds, of which a budget memo will be coming soon to move some of those funds forward. The engineer left two point one in construction. And I've got an email in to him, and I'm hoping he determines what he needs for the beginning of this year as to whether he's carrying forward. In the fund status, we talked about a little bit earlier when we were talking about assigned funds. Thirty-six percent general fund is where we ended up, which, like I said, we usually get about a six percent difference from actual budget to actual. The supplemental fund is at twenty-five percent, which is about where we would like that one. Mental health, obviously, that's, we went that low because we have to give all the money to the region, which is us also. Rural Services, twenty percent, that was a, that was a nice ending fund balance in the Rural Services Fund. Of course, I'm going to amend some dollars in for that also. Secondary Road Fund, seventy percent ending fund balance. If you look at the revenues, overall, we brought in ninety-eight percent of what we budgeted for the, for actual, so that was good. One note. I did lower the transfer from the general to the supplemental. We budgeted, we talked about six hundred thousand possibly needed. Until we get farther into the year, we don't know really how much the insurance use is going to be. We were able to lower that to, we're able to only transfer three hundred thousand as opposed to the six hundred thousand, which gives us a little bit more fun in the general, money in the general fund. But it also leaves us to okay in the supplemental fund. So at this point in time, we'll look at what Twenty-One does. We may need to, we may need to use some of those dollars in Twenty-One, but at this point in time, we'll see. Okay? May I make questions?
No. I'd like to first, I brought the math in my head. Okay, so from that, twenty, two point three million is, okay. Based on what you said, we're looking at about one point four million going back for the four-year Twenty-One. Plus, we're talking about the three hundred thousand that may have been supplemental, et cetera. So we're looking roughly at about a five hundred thousand dollar true flexibility for special requests, et cetera. Right, I mean, just rough numbers.
Rough numbers. Like I said, I'm putting together the amendments I know need to happen. So, so we'll know more when that happens. I'm looking at, I'm looking at August, end of August for that amendment at this point in time. So we'll, we'll know fairly soon in the year where we're, where our carryforwards are being used and not being used.
So, and that's the money that if we're looking at anything related to COVID testing or the food bank request, or, you know, any of that type of stuff, that's where we are. I, I'm starting my spreadsheet again for new fiscal year. And then of that six hundred thousand, I know that I'm also going to take out two hundred thousand because of what Ted Rasmussen said about property taxes collection. That's what was left of the amount from property taxes at this point. Seven hundred thousand total had come in, and he thought something around, of all parts, it was something around two hundred thousand of that or more. Was it two fifty? I just figured two hundred here. And we'll know more, you know, the timberway, but just to let you know, I'm keeping my little running thing. So that's where we take out, so now we're down to about four, maybe four hundred thousand dollars. But what I'm hearing. Just in order to mark, we say is that the end of August, she'll have a finer figure. Absolutely, we're there. Her number is rule.
Right, yeah. You know, I, we can, we can look at what we left and all that kind of stuff, but keep in mind that there's a whole bunch of things that didn't get, that didn't get finished or paid for out of F Y Twenty funds that we're going to move forward to Twenty-One, and they're big things.
Yeah, no, I, like I said, I could find it, as you know, it's just that little rough in the back of my mind number. We're going to reuse numbers, that's a little. Hey, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Upcoming agenda items?
I don't have any. Heard of will be here next week. I corresponded, Susan Sanders corresponded with them, we've all included, corresponded from each other. I sent them a suggestion about saying that, and I'm going to take it a while, I mean, I know we hear fears of, okay? Because it's very important, not only for the supervisors, but I think for the city council. If they come up and invite them to watch next week again, that they understand exactly how funding has occurred and what changes are coming down the road and why. And it's not an easy process to understand, because a lot of it has to do with siloed funds. And if you, on the agenda for Ames City Council tonight, at the end is where the staff refers information over. And an email that heard us sent to Deb Schillerup, because of her being the asset liaison for Ames, explaining about the possible cutbacks in service and why, related to like this five three one one funding, et cetera. That that is being presented to the city council tonight, not for discussion, but just at the end to roll over and refer. So like I said, I'm going to invite them, or at least someone that can, to watch our meeting next week, because I feel that information might be valuable for them.
Next, we go to public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on the agenda. The Board may not take action on it. Comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Are there any members of the public who have comments they would like to make?
Remember to unmute yourself.
Yes, remember to unmute yourself if you do. So I've opened the public forum. And hearing no one for that, we'll close, but with forum number two. We'll go on to liaison assignments, committee meetings, updates, and announcements from the Supervisors.
I'll go ahead and go, I, last night, I had a boost board meeting. The first, first one was the new director. Marion had returned in June, so we have to do Mickey Fisher, Boost Director. I thought it went quite smoothly and stuff, and. No big things to report from their meeting. It was mainly, you know, working on the industry financials and seeking out additional board members and just general activities and training that the new director has been going through. They may have more as we, as it progresses on. I have on my calendar the C C M T meeting for tomorrow. I did receive a vacation, I think it was yesterday morning, might have been Friday morning, definitely stepping up initiative. They have canceled it. They were looking at doing a Zoom conference this year. They decided to film that for this year and look to do it in Twenty Twenty-One. And then on Monday, the twentieth evening, is my next Florida Health Leadership Class. I only have one more after that, so that's on my agenda. I did go to, oh, I do have a ARK meeting tonight, and I think it was the Slater City Council meeting yesterday. I guess I would say the hot topic at that particular meeting was fireworks. And some of the complaints, and it sounds like they have a long time of when individuals are able to shoot off, shoot off fireworks down in that area. I know that they thought they would have a little room down there, and I'm not, they're a little surprised we not have as many people talking about fireworks. I did bring up that our buildings are closed at the time, and then the avenues of people, how they could reach, reach us or other departments, or if they put any complaints from anyone about that. And they have not heard anything to relate to us at this particular time. I also promoted some of our boards and commissions. And while I said many are in unincorporated area, if they know somebody in the unincorporated area, who might be interested to look at our website and to consider bringing an application. That's attorney. Okay, so today, your Zoom meeting hosting training at two o'clock, Barbara, I have a question for. I didn't have that on my notes, too. Is that via Zoom? Okay, I'll have to go back and look for my link again, sorry. Okay, I wasn't quite there, so thank you for that. So then, of course, the AAMPO meeting on future Twenty Forty tonight. Now, due to my correspondence yesterday with you guys, and then Lyndon passed that on to Darren, Darren responded to us, okay, I believe. And I picked up something that I had missed before, why, I said, that's why having multiple, multiple lines look at somebody is a great idea, is that the new four-year transportation improvement plan that the AAMPO Board is set to vote on tonight does not include any mentions about the roundabout. And Darren told, informed us in that email that he said he tried to talk to Damien about that, the city person, and that didn't go anywhere. So I'm going to discuss that with the city council tonight. The other member on the AAMPO that is not already a member of the Ames City Council is Gilbert Mayor John Pop. Okay, so I'm going to point that out, those that were concerned to John, and he weighed in at the public session also, you know, in the session. So it's saying, hey, this has got to get started, kind of like I, so we've got to get that on this plan, if at all possible. And I assume, and I'm kind of looking at you guys for any input you want to give, feedback. What we're really advocating for is either Cameron School and George Washington Harbor, or Hyde and One Ninetieth. I mean, those are the two that I think, that, Hyde and One Ninetieth is the one that John Pop, I think, is really, really concerned about, you know, because they're coming up, those students are coming up today around property and Gilbert. And obviously, we've got a concern with Cameron School and George Washington. And I tend to tell, to explain to the city council tonight, that you've got a developer there at Cameron School and George Washington. You've got land that part of it is in the city, part of it would be county. And, and that's going to be difficult with the development there, to go ahead and get the land we need for a roundabout. So waiting is just going to make it worse instead of better, okay? Hyde and One Ninetieth that we discovered and discussed before is really both sides of the road are own, are, are within the annexed area of things. But I want to make sure the city council really.
That would be good. I know that Damon, that would be good. The other thing that happens there is the Harbor and One Ninetieth intersection is, you know, because of all the development there and all of the being in the Gilbert School District, that one, I think is absolutely important.
Okay, to get in, I'll add that one, okay? Yes, and of course, that was the third one that was identified, that on their Twenty Twenty Forty plan. Okay. Okay, so then, so tomorrow, C C M T, yes, the Main Street Ribbon Cutting, Ribbon Cutting. Story County Housing Trust Fund, this is, is the project that donated forty thousand, forty-six thousand dollars to it. And yeah, if the Supervisors are invited to speak, we, you know, please feel free, you know, I, nice of them to invite us all and everything, okay? Then I do have a community and family resources advisory group meeting at five thirty on Wednesday night. And it's, it's good to just kind of hear from the people who are actually working with substance abuse and mental health issues to hear what's going on here right in the county. and mental health issues, um to hear what's going on here right in the county. So then on Thursday, I do have the Workforce Iowa group at 7:30 in the morning. Lisa, I forgot, we need to submit an application for you to be approved to join the CEO group. Okay, so to transfer out, if you're still interested, or Linda, if you wanna take it on, but I mean, you know, for whoever wants to take that on, to transition out, now that we've passed the resolution, you're starting to talk about funding and development for the future, and I think is the perfect time for me to pass this one on. But I, I forgot, I had to apply even as a supervisor to this group. Weird rules. Okay, so
So are you saying your term is up now?
Well, my term would be up December. You could make the, you could make the switch over. But this one, I thought, might be the first one to turn over, because the group of the CEOs are starting now to address longer term what will happen after December 31st of 2020.
Here's my only question. Uh huh. We will have a third supervisor on January 2nd.
Right.
So to start to divide up boards now?
Okay.
Or we might have, and that's just my thought. And to the board, you guys, I appreciate your comment.
Yeah, no, I I mean, I I understand where you're going, because it almost sounds like, oh, this would be a good time to have someone who is not going to potentially
Right.
be here to be on it. Um although, the only person that we know who's not for elections who will be here would be Linda.
Right.
You know, at that particular time.
It's no problem. I'll just hang with it and keep you guys informed. I mean, it kind of how it got passed to me was former supervisor Sanders saying, it's yours, because I was the alternate on it. And then whenever we had a discussion, I had to kind of pick it up. So at least whoever acts it up will have more than I know, with, that's no problem. Okay, we'll just step up. Then, also on Thursday, I have the Central Iowa Regional Transportation Plan in Illini. Um then the Hunger Collaboration, and then the jurisdictional meeting that evening. So if you're looking for me, look for me on Zoom. And then on Friday morning, Mr. ABC, Executive.
Yesterday, um the opioid task force met, had not met in quite some time. We had a good um, good presentation of a county attorney's office on the strategic intercept model, the SIM grant, which is pre-arrest diversion program. And um the chief had gave, basically gave a presentation on that, and as you remember, we, they have hired Linda Hansen to coordinate this effort from here on out, and she was on the call as well. Um, um, they're doing a good job of identifying gaps, and um, and I think have a good plan to move forward in terms of looking at early diversion from from rest for people with substance abuse problems. I um Conservation Board met last night. Lots of things are moving forward there. Uh they did, uh received a report, and I'm blanking on that, the Iowa, the Trust for Iowa Lands, the Trust for Conservation Lands, uh did send, give them a report um on funding options for conservation. They accepted that report. It will probably come to us, but uh I think there was a realization that a lot more work would need to be done on a bulk literature than what our options were, if we wanted to use any of the power.
But it is available for us to read.
It is available, and I think you should, I think it was attached, yeah, attached to the agenda for the Conservation Board meeting last night. Um, did send in, um between Carter Martin and myself, we got the, the, our confirmation that we um adopted last Friday, asking for a test Iowa site in Story County. Um, the governor sent it to the governor's office, I sent it to the Iowa Department of Public Health, so that was, that was sent in. And I did follow up with Mary Greeley on what was going on with test Iowa site, and I'm gonna be involved in a meeting this afternoon, um where some options are gonna be talked about, whether it would be a site, or whether it would be a clinic, and what the options would be, and will be there, with us, for Story County, but no final decisions have been made there. Um tomorrow then, uh CCMT meeting, the mainstream of the groundbreaking of that was also on my calendar, and Emergency Management Commission meets tomorrow evening. Thursday, I'm gonna be, I'm called in the group on the Nevada Healthy Hometown Initiative, which I don't know much about, but I would ask to participate in. So I'll, I'll give an update on that next week. Also, Squawk Creek Watership Management Association is meeting Thursday afternoon, and then I'll have a jurisdictional conference call. That's several Zoom meetings in a row right there. Everything you're gonna be Zooming, yeah, I think they're, yeah, all the meetings are with Zoom anymore. So so it's gonna be a busy week, lots of issues coming up. We're looking forward to hearing more about the transportation plan tonight. Of course, thank you for all the uh, the email you sent out, explaining that on PowerPoint. There's a lot in that, but it's, it's, yeah, a lot, a lot of it seems wish list like right now. So that's all that I, that I have to report on. Um, any other announcements? If not, I'd entertain motion for a adjournment.
I'll move.
And I'll second.
I.
Wilson.
I.
Mark and I, your turn. Thank you very much.